You know why? It's exactly if. He wants to fix the wall. Some place of music.
I know.
So. So you know what he can even tell that it's stickered. Had a whole panel.
Yeah.
Really big wall.
Isn't it like we're.
Turn to the next one.
That's, that's really good.
I think that's cool though.
This is why.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just full.
That's a draw. Yeah.
John, I need you to change me for the house.
Yeah. And that, that, that's like. Now you think about. All the other. Isn't this, yeah. Looking like guys. Go take one of the.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah. I don't like.
I could imagine that.
We're seeing that cool logo.
Yeah. You had no reason to come here. I know. I told them I thought it was late night. Yeah, like I was like nine thirty.
What were you looking for?
Well, that's true. That's fair.
Yeah, see, we do that right after. Then we want out.
It's not a big deal.
Yeah, plus.
And we'll take another.
Seventy-two.
And you wanna get pictures?
I put it to seventy. It actually did.
Get a picture with Jed and his family too, so he can rip off this. So he doesn't have to have the ugly sticker. It's beautiful. Retro. It's just being refreshed. Nineteen ninety. There we go. I like it.
Invited.
Do you remember?
Or? I, I, I do have. Yeah, be careful. One, right, introduce girls. Hey, Peter, sorry I didn't reply to earlier. I hope everyone's okay. Good news?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
No, no, that's what you have.
So as you can, as you can tell, we got a lot going on in this council meeting with the new logo. And it being the first meeting of the year, um, we have one new council member and then two that are, um, serving another four years, so we have to swear them in, so a lot of excitement. No. No. I swear. Um, when I hit the go live button in the bottom left, that means we're live. You'll be able to tell. But I gotta, I always get queued up a little early, so it's on air before it should be. Well, we're gonna talk about changing it when Marco comes in next.
Don't tell him long enough. Be your god or I'll be your sister.
You could definitely use hours.
I just look at her.
Oh, yeah.
The service cameras.
I think we guys, we wanted to feel.
Hey, Anna, you can use this mic as well. Test, test, test.
You guys can just stand here, I think. And I'll be at the corner. Exactly. I memorized.
All right, it is six P M. We'll call the Sartell City Council meeting to order. Please rise for prolegial allegiance.
Play the allegiance. United States of America. To your republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council first order of business tonight is the agenda review and adoption. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
With a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second.
Ryan, amended agenda. With the added items.
The amended agenda with items, uh, six O and six P, which are part of the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the amended agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor on approving the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Uh, special presentations. Tonight we have oath of office for mayor and two council members.
All right, we will start with Mayor Fitzsim. If you want to, in front here, and did you wanna have your family up with you?
Come on up, girls.
All right, when you all get up there, we'll ask, a dad raises his right hand, all right. Ryan Fitzsim, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that you will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Sartell, Minnesota, to the best of your judgment and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Awesome, congrats, and thank you for assuming this important responsibility. Thanks for joining us, girls. Come do another four years. All right, council member Elmus. Kelly wasn't gonna join you, but. Council member Elmus, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that you will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member of the city of Sartell, Minnesota, to the best of your judgment and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations, and thanks for assuming this responsibility. Another four years. All right, council member Meyer, come on up.
I guess now we can wait for the all of it to be done and we'll do it.
All right, please raise your right hand. Council member Meyer, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that you will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member of the city of Sartell, Minnesota, to the best of your judgment and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Awesome, welcome aboard, congrats, and thanks for assuming this role. Thank you, everyone, and welcome.
We have officially seated the new Sartell City Council. Next up is our brand reveal.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing us to present tonight. Hello, we are from Gaslight Creative, a brand new marketing agency located in downtown South Cloud. My name is Kelly Kayne, the director of marketing.
And my name is Joanie Plonstock, for your record. And president of Sartell.
The city of Sartell was in need of a brand refresh. The council reached out to Gaslight Creative last spring, and with their guidance, we went to work. A community survey was conducted for the residents of Sartell by Mindful Marketing. There were nearly one thousand respondents. The survey validated what the residents believe to be true about Sartell. Results serve as an inspiration and a guide for us to develop a new brand. To begin, we needed to get to the very essence of what makes Sartell, well, Sartell. We had to understand why people choose to live or move to this area. Furthermore, why did I choose to live in Sartell? Well, as they know, communities are formed around similar ideas and passions. For me, and probably for most parents, it was the schools and the idea that our children are our biggest investment. For the runner, maybe it's the miles of trails that line our streets. Perhaps for the entrepreneur, it's the perfect spot, small enough for charm, but big enough for opportunity, where you can beat a prospect for coffee at Second Street Coffee House. First thought, it could be the community spirit they feel, picking the perfect pumpkin at the Boyd Johnson Pumpkin Giveaway, or seeing the Country Lights Festival holiday lights shimmer against the dark December sky. For others, maybe it's simply the stillness of the river that brings calm to life's daily current. Everyone has their own reasons as to what drew them to Sartell, to the city of Sartell. But this, they know, is true. It's not where we live, but how we live that matters, lives Sartell. With all of this in mind, and after doing a little research on Sartell's history, we came up with these four symbols that can tie all of these attributes together. The bridge is a simple representation of the old Sartell Bridge located next to the Riverboat Depot on the Mississippi. This landmark speaks not only to Sartell's history, but also to the idea of progress and connecting the past to the future. The sun is a symbol of good, representing Sartell's positivity, energy, and overall warmth of the community. Three rapids reflect upon Sartell's history when the city of Sartell was first known as the third rapid by French fur traders. Furthermore, the bottom rapid with the green hue has a dual purpose of representing not only the third rapid, but also a bank along the river. The circle represents community, friendship, unity, inclusivity, and growth. Color is an important communicator. We pulled together a palette that spoke to the results of the survey and further aligns Sartell's brand. Each color is, color's name is inspired by areas within the city. So we have the Riverboat Blue, peaceful, sincere. Morning Star Blue, optimistic, energetic. Daybreak Duke, safe and welcoming. Evergreen Waters, growing, heritage, modern. Grizzly Pop, dependable. Pinkone Ash, stable, grounded, and Blackberry, secure. Now that we've pulled all of that symbolism together, here's a moment you've all been waiting for. We'd like to invite the council to stand up and help with the big reveal. Together, we're going to count down from three. Are you ready?
Hold on, hold on. It's Bobby. You sure about that?
Wait for me to start counting. Are you ready? Three.
Really building this up here.
Where's the band?
Oh, we take ours on.
Three, two, one. In its first, very first public appearance, the city of Sartell, here's your brand new logo. This new logo again embodies the history and spirit of Sartell while keeping some brand equity. Two local versions were created for the city. The primary logo is on the screen and on the council shirts, while the secondary logo is on the wall behind them. And for every logo, there are host of lockups and other variations to suit each purpose. The secondary logo will be used when the brand needs to be seen from a distance. For example, on a water tower, or when the proportion of the space calls for a more horizontal version, like the back wall. But both logos represent all of the symbolism we discussed in the previous slides and the overall essence of Sartell. Each department within the city is defined by their own complementary color to the core color palette. We developed patterns. We sourced textures. And we created shapes to accompany the brand. These expanded elements have multiple uses. This is how Sartell's new brand will be integrated into the city's social media channels. And the website was reimagined with a new brand and a better user experience. Anna's gonna come and talk a little bit more about the website.
Thanks, Ian. You can see on the screen here, uh, the new branded website, which we had the pleasure of working with Gaslight on, and then also revise, uh, a new service behind the scenes. This will go live tomorrow, actually. Um, potentially some lucky losers will get to see it tonight if they're up really late. Um, but you can see elements of the new brand included. Uh, the new website will also include quick, easy functions to get to some of the most important features that new residents use, such as hand utility bills right from the front page. There'll be a notification center where residents can engage with us by signing up for different notification features. A calendar of events, uh, latest news that you can see on the screen there. Um, and a video that we're going to share with you shortly here as well. So we're very excited to roll off this, uh, new website and can't wait to reveal it to everybody tomorrow as well with the new brand.
With that, we are, uh, gonna transition to explaining, uh, via residents exactly why we felt like this brand was, uh, so important for our community. As I mentioned, there was a video that, uh, folks will be able to experience straight from, uh, the website on the main screen. Uh, we'd like to share that with you all now, uh, as an opportunity to explain why Sartell, as Gaslight shared from the very beginning, um, of the survey that we walked through and had over a thousand respondents on that helped us with the very beginning of this, uh, brand process, but also hearing directly from them of why Sartell. Um, so we're gonna transition to that and hopefully folks online can, uh, view it as well. Rob, do we need to push play? I'll let you run it. We just wanna make sure everybody online can see it as well, so just give us a second here. There we go. All of my friends. We love Sartell because of all the wonderful walking trails.
I love Sartell 'cause I love golfing with the boys.
I love Sartell because of the great schools.
I love Sartell because bowling is fun.
I love Sartell because of all of the activities for senior citizens.
I love Sartell because of the team spirit.
We love Sartell 'cause we love spending time together on the river.
We'd like to thank the mayor and the members of the council for trusting us to create the city of Sartell to be. Thank you very much.
We'd like to thank you. We'd like to thank you.
Extended applause.
Definitely wait till that's over. Good. Uh, certainly like to thank you for, uh, the number of revisions, the, the, taking all the feedback from not only, uh, this council, previous council. Um, what you do is not easy, and, uh, and having multiple, uh, means of feedback, and then trying to create a image and a, a refreshed brand is certainly challenging. Um, I think the, the, the new, uh, logo in itself, uh, really speaks to our community's brand of what makes Sartell great, and, and Anna had talked about the over a thousand, uh, respondents to surveys. But that's our brand from a residential brand, from a commercial brand, from, uh, a tourism brand, and, and I, I'm hopeful that this, this new, uh, refresh will carry us forward. I know you were, uh, fortunate to do the last one, maybe twenty-plus years ago?
Yeah.
So I think we could only be hopeful that this will carry us forward for, uh, the next twenty years.
Awesome, thank you.
Council, any other comments, feedback?
Super excited for the overall look and, and theme and all sorts of different uses, so for sure, great job.
Yeah, great job. Council, I will look for a motion to formally, uh, accept the, or approve the, uh, refresh brand.
I'll motion.
Of his first motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Thank you very much. Council, next on the agenda is the approval of city council minutes from December twelfth, regular meeting and December twelfth special meeting. I take a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto consent agenda, we have items A through P. Uh, I will pull item G for myself and council member Elmus. Uh, would look for a motion to approve A through P with the exception of G.
I'd like to pull N.
Item N. Any others? Seeing none? Um, I'll make a motion to approve A through P with the exception of G and N. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Uh, item G, simply pulling as council member Elmus and myself are members of the Sartell Fire Department, and so we will be abstaining from that vote. Uh, is there a motion on that item?
I'll motion.
There's a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three to two, or excuse me, three, zero, two abstained. Uh, and Jed, item M.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna pull this 'cause I had a quick question as it relates to kind of the change in going from a server-based storage to a cloud-based storage, and just, ultimately just more on the, the function of ownership of the data and if there are retention. I, I'm assuming you maybe have some retention rules that, uh, surround the videos that are taken, and, you know, if you were to, sounds like it's a very nice cost-effective thing upfront, but I just wanted to ensure that on the backend, when you, if you did choose to, chew, or choose to, uh, go to a different vendor, that you own the data, that you can transfer all the retention records, and there's not a huge cost to that. Yeah, so obviously it's a cloud-based system, uh, currently with our squad cameras, it's, uh, server-based. This allows more storage. It made more sense to go with this route because of the cost of storage for any type of data is extremely expensive, so, um, it will go with us. So if we change vendors later on, there's always, um, a component that we can keep to keep retrieving that, that data, even if we were to go to a different vendor.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Council, any other questions on the item N for a call for a vote? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item N carries. Onto new business. First one is 2023 annual commissions and committee appointments. Got that in front of you? Let me take it.
Yeah, you can take it. Go ahead.
Sure. I did speak with, I think, each one of you. Not a whole lot of change. Anyone have questions on it?
Do I have to be your food tester too if I'm?
Tim is still gonna take APO?
Yes.
So tried to accommodate his scheduling and I think most of us had worked through that before. I think the big committee that council member Meyer is gonna be serving on now will be the Finance Committee with the departure of council member Kolb. But yeah. In the absence of any questions, we can take a motion.
Very excited about getting out there to those committees.
It's your turn to serve as chair on APO, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Definitely don't wanna disrupt that one then. And I will be taking on Metro Bus. I'll be taking that back on in the absence of feedback there, so. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve the 2023 annual commissions and committee appointments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next item is solar lease. I'll turn it over to Rob.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and members of the council. We actually have Enterprise Energy here, so when we have questions at the end, I'll just ask for him to go to the podium and answer any questions that council may have. So Enterprise Energy came to us interested in leasing our old lagoon to develop a solar installation. The lagoon, as you can see on your screen, is located west of Fourth Avenue South. Further north on Fourth Avenue South would be the Public Works Building for reference. The current agreement in your packet calls for 2,500 per acre annually on eight acres with an operating period of 25 years. But if legislation is passed to allow installation to increase above one megawatt, then Enterprise Energy could occupy more land and we'd still earn lease payments by acre. I also, one more thing to note, there's a pretty detailed decommissioning session which inserts that the leased area is restored to the same condition prior to construction, whenever the lease may end or is terminated. Just one other thing, being that it is an old lagoon, it creates a lot of development challenges. So being able to make use of this land to positively benefit both the city and Enterprise Energy would be a great opportunity for both parties. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Council, what questions do you have?
Has anybody looked into wildlife impact on wildlife or natural vegetation in that area? I mean, I know it is a lagoon, so there isn't a lot of other uses, but is that something they consider or look into when doing the study on the space?
Yeah, Evan Carlson here, Enterprise Energy. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, right now it's in essence a brownfield remediation project, so part of what it looks like after the fact is on the table. It's standard to plant all of these in some sort of condition, it's called a seed mix. But you know, right now it's black and we need to dry, so you definitely dry them and basically grow it. But yeah, we need to, you know, there's a lot of work that has to happen between now and groundbreaking, including a conditional use and special use permit. We have to come back here with a plan for that. So you know, there are good state guidelines on how to plant these things. Typically that would be programmed and followed, and I'd include those in my supplemental materials for the permit.
Okay. Beetle, this one's probably for you. Is there any, as we look to, I guess, revitalize some of the land east of here, is this site, does that infringe on any of that?
No, actually this site has a pretty high berm all the way around it. You probably won't be able to see anything inside it and there is not much other use than probably what we're, you know, being.
But transmission lines or others shouldn't inhibit?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And I do know, council for reference, this site in particular, probably six years ago, council at that time had been working with a solar developer on the site and that was one of the, the berms was one of the advantages of the site is that it really was hidden.
It was studied pretty significant at that time.
Beetle, is there easy access to, you know, the outlined area there?
So that was, that was actually our, the Sartell Lagoons, the sanitary sewer system back in the eighty, early eighties, eighty-one or two, I'm not sure. So that there's coming off fourth, there's two lagoons that were leased from or purchased. D'Zurich and Greedy used them as they, they used them as a dumping site. Now they've been capped. So this is the third one. So I'm not sure how the access will go, but it'll probably come off fourth, I would assume, and stay up on top of the berm. There's a road all the way down to it.
And Evan, your installation process or what, how long does that take or what does that process look like?
Well, the unique part about this is the remediation process. So that is to determine what kind of remediation needs to happen before we can build it. But once that's done, the actual construction takes about three months from, in terms of visible construction. After that, there's ongoing testing. It could take an additional couple of months, but the actual construction of it does take a long time. Pre-development activities take quite a long time. So I need to submit an application to Excel, a lot of environmental work on this one. But it's construction, not a long process.
Okay, thank you.
And I have some questions around access. I think maybe to council member Smith's point, when I think about construction, I look at some of these neighborhoods, definitely wouldn't want construction going through there if we can bring it from Fourth Ave. All of that, I think we can achieve or have that language as part of the conditional use development and in no way will it hinder the development, but maybe just having some outline there.
Is that the southeast route along the town line or?
Yeah, yeah. Just so as we look at the, maybe I'd say the bottom left, you can see a smaller neighborhood there. Tried to bring truck traffic in there for installation and others would be less than desirable from a community impact perspective.
Sure, so there's the construction process and then access and then interconnection points. And as far as where the interconnection point is located, there are several suitable locations here, but I need to access an overhead three-phase power line.
Yep.
One north, one west, likely one east as well. But I think, you know, I'm flexible on that. There's a lot of passing.
Great. Council, any other questions? If not, would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the solar lease. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be continuing to work with staff as this project develops and make sure to keep everybody informed that it's making progress.
Thank you very much. Onto department reports. First up is Public Works Engineering.
Mayor, members of the council, you have our report and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions for Public Works or Engineering?
Is there anything we can do to help snowplow?
In what regards?
What would be your wish list?
Remove snow from public right-of-way.
What might be your wish list right now or needs?
You know, it's a lot of snow, a lot of snow at one time. We have every piece of equipment we own out and everybody out, so. For the most part, I think we're doing fine on the roads. We are falling behind on the bike paths, sidewalks, but you know, they're secondary to the roads in safety, so. We're on it every day. And I hope we're making progress every day. You know, we do have breakdowns, but it's gone pretty good. The last event, we had almost zero breakdown, so we were on the road with everything we had.
I saw a couple different pieces of equipment out there I'd not seen before, so you've been pulling some out of, you know, there was a plow that had multiple blades on it and it looked like a front-end loader with a blade on it.
We've always had that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I hadn't seen it, I guess.
So we have, you know, we have eight trucks that run on an event, four loaders that run an event, five one-ton pickups that run, three blowers that run. And when we get to a point like this on the bike paths and some of the sidewalks, most of the time we can get away with running them bike paths inside with one-ton trucks with plows, which is extremely fast. When it gets this heavy, the trucks can't get through, so it's all blower work. And as you know, snow blowers don't move very fast, so it does take us extra time.
Well, excellent job. I think our streets have been remarkably snow-free and you go to other cities and it's really apparent. Driving into another city or even down in the cities, it's a great job, so.
All right, thank you.
What I can appreciate is when people know where the actual line is now between city and township. And it happens to be just north on Pine Cone, just past the last roundabout, where it becomes very dangerous. And I felt or fielded a lot of comments about the road condition north of Thirty-Fifth and it was a pleasure to inform them that was not our road.
Them are always nice calls.
Yeah.
Easy answers.
But there certainly continues to be some concern in the community. You know, we pride ourselves in having the bike paths and the walking trails and absolutely if we have to snowblow them rather than plow them, it takes extra. What do we, what do we need to do or what do you need from us? Is this a one-time event or has this become our new 100-year flood that happens every two years in the city of Sartell?
Yeah, you know, it, you know, every snow event's different, you know. You know, this year is different than last year. You know, you could say, okay, we need to bring more staff on, more part-time, but you know, you don't get the snow, then you, you know, what are you doing with that staff? And you know, you gotta have supervision to all the staff. You gotta get everybody trained on all the equipment. So I feel we're doing, you know, we're meeting our expectations, you know. The roads are number one priority, safe. Then we get to the bike paths and the sidewalks. Maybe we're doing too many bike paths. Maybe we're doing too many sidewalks. You know, maybe we need to reevaluate how much we're doing on that small stuff. How much is it really getting used and, you know, in some of these areas? You know, we haven't done anything on the south, some of the new roads. We're not even doing them bike paths this year at this point. You know, maybe some of reevaluation there, year to year, you know. We put up a mile and a half of snow fence. That's kind of saved us in a lot of events, you know, all that snow fence we put up. But it does save a lot of time and equipment putting that up.
Sure. I'll continue to advocate that we do more of the bike paths, but I can also appreciate the, you know, new extension in the dead of winter of dailor and scout that very limited if any people are walking on that path. And so that makes sense. I think some of the areas that are within our residential areas. But certainly something to ongoing, you know, figure out how we do it and would also in the same vein can, you know, commend you for the safety of our streets, top-notch, so thank you.
Thank you.
Council, anything else? Seeing none. Fire.
Mayor, members of council, you have a monthly report for fire. Just, I guess, to touch base on, we're extremely pleased to have added three new members this last month here and we're well into the onboarding process. One of them came with some firefighter classes already and the other two have already started classes, so we're moving ahead pretty quickly. Any questions? Happy to answer them.
Any questions for fire chief? Seeing none. Thank you. Oddly enough, we have police. Chief Hughes.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. You have my report before you. I did include some information about very busy Christmas Eve and Christmas Day in Sartell. One thing I did not include in there that there were many officers that were called in earlier, held over on shift on those days, time spent away from their family. Maybe they were supposed to be off or be home at a certain time. But it was, in all my years here, I don't remember a holiday weekend being as busy as what they had with burglaries and vehicle pursuits and, you know, the snow didn't help, obviously. But the fact that we had officers out helping with broken sprinklers at businesses and, you know, mopping and pushing water and we had them shoveling and doing things like that, it's a, and we're super proud of the men and women on the department for taking a step above. And it's stuff that happens all the time that I think, especially over the holidays, it's really worth pointing out.
I will, I will attest to that. I was on one of the scenes of a broken sprinkler line where not only did two of our officers take off their duty vests so they could really get in and do some work, but our fire chief also was there mopping water late into the evening, so absolutely, thank you for that.
If there's no other questions on that, I do have one more thing I would like to talk about this evening.
Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Just something I'd like to read to council tonight. So in the beginning of February of this year, I'll have thirty-two years of my thirty-four-year law enforcement career will have been spent with the Sartell Police Department, where I've watched a community thrive from a few thousand to almost 20,000 people. I was provided tremendous opportunity by the previous chiefs, O'Driscoll and Rinkstrom, to better myself and hopefully the department as well as the community in which I also live. To work at an organization where one was afforded the opportunity to work their way through the ranks to eventually lead the department was both an eye-opening and humble experience. I have either hired or was part of the hiring process for all of the current staff, both sworn and non-sworn at the department, and couldn't have asked for better persons to work alongside of, including the retirees that have left our agency. The team we have at Sartell PD is among the best I have seen and would put them up against any department in comparison. I'm sure you hear that or could hear that from many leaders, but I truly think we have a top-notch department here. Leadership is about setting good examples and allowing those to work around you the opportunity and trust to enhance their knowledge and provide growth in their prospective roles within the department and to mold into future leaders. The ideas brought forth by department members over the years have made the department more efficient and effective in our policing strategies. As you may know, over the past two years, I've been working on succession planning. Over that time, I've worked with providing deputy police chief Wayne Schreiner with more decision-making opportunities on departmental operations, staffing, budgeting, et cetera. Wayne took quickly to these new opportunities and has made sound decisions and judgments in those areas. Wayne is respected by myself, the rest of the PD staff, and I've heard from other departments that have positive interactions with Wayne, including other city staff and community members. As I contemplated when to retire from my career, I wanted to try to get through this here, ensure that both the department and the community were in good hands. I am supportive and hopeful that the city council will promote from within and allow deputy chief Schreiner the opportunity to lead this wonderful department into the future. With that being said, I also want to thank the current and previous city council administrators and other city staff and leadership within the city of Sartell. The working relationship amongst all of us has gotten our community through some tenuous times. I will forever be thankful for all of the support I've experienced as a department head, both professionally and personally. Finally, I want to thank the Sartell community that has been so supportive of our department and oftentimes reaches out at the perfect time to pick up our spirits and support our programs when needed. So it's with heartfelt sincerity that I am submitting my letter of retirement effective March 31st, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And thank you for leading the department over thirty-two years, nineteen as chief, pretty remarkable. Had an opportunity earlier today to talk with chief and reminisce a little bit about what our community was thirty-two years ago. And not only our community and how it's evolved, but also the department. And as he departs off for a long, fun, travel-filled retirement later this year, knowing that he helped, you know, firsthand build out the new public safety facility, which is a pride and joy of our community. and really, you know, set our department up for great success in the future. So thank you. Counsel, any other thoughts, questions, comments?
This is my first night on council, but I've been in the community for eight years. We lived here about twenty years ago and it's a, it's an awesome community. And that doesn't happen without a chief that leads in the way that you have. And I just really appreciate all of your service to be able to take a city from two thousand to to twenty-some thousand. The way you've probably had to operate has significantly changed and that's a skillset that we have benefited from. And so just wanted to thank you for all of your years of service.
And I also want to recognize today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation. So seems fitting all the commentary of appreciation towards you and your department. And thank you to the rest of our officers. I don't know where we go from. Thank you, Chief. Counsel, our personnel committee will work through this and make a recommendation, plan to have that at our next city council meeting. We'll move forward from there. Commission updates? None. City Council Committee updates. We'll start with Tim.
Chief, took me by surprise, but I appreciate your service and look forward to working with you for succession, succession plan.
No other updates, but thank you for your service and, and guidance and, you know, you will be missed, but you are very deserving of everything to come. So thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, between oath of office, the new brand and ultimately Chief Hughes, there's many thanks to go around. So we appreciate everyone tonight. So thank you, Chief.
Jed?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Cottonbill over there too. I know your team probably gets a lot more complaints than they do thanks and just wanted to add to the thank you for everybody else tonight for, for all the work that you've done and the time and hours that you guys are putting in, so.
I think to Alex's point, short council meeting tonight, but wow, lot of things happening. So yeah, congrats to fellow council members on being sworn in. The three of us will have the fortune of serving together the next four years. Look forward to that, along with other council. Couldn't be more excited about the rebrand effort. And Jed, you haven't sat, had the fortune of sitting through a lot of those meetings, but the other four of us giving vision and through multiple different parties and I'm confident that we landed on something that represents Sartell. I love our tie to the history of the Third Rapids. You know, the bridge is, as, as we open that later this year, is, is going to be a very recognizable part of Sartell, which I feel like for the last, you know, maybe ten, twenty years hasn't been. And to see that brought back, people are going to see that logo and, and recognize what it stands for and, and everything about Sartell. So very excited about that. And once again, Chief Hughes, thank you. I was reminiscing just about our different interactions and I can remember, I think it was, I texted you that picture a while ago, you and I bell ringing. Might have been ten years ago. We both looked a lot younger than we do today. But as, as a resident growing up here and then interacting with you from a fire department perspective, and then great fortune of interacting on council and as mayor, really appreciated everything, all of our interactions. So thank you. And counsel, with that, I'll close and ask for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.